Okay, I want to start off, there's been numerous phone calls, numerous emails, both from council members as well as citizens, asking about the terms of the insurance, what it means, what we get, the status of the building, where we're going to go, things like that. There's been some suggestion that perhaps unilateral decisions were being made, which I hope to explain is not the case. And so I wanted to start off with a simple definition of what insurance in fact is. It's coverage by a contract in which one party, which is in this case our insurance company, agrees to indemnify or reimburse another party, which is us, for a loss that occurred under the terms of the contract. Now whether something's under the terms of the contract actually is a decision made in the earlier stages by the insurance company when they in fact accept that fact that it is a covered loss, which we are at that stage where this has been accepted as a covered loss. And so we have different coverages. Our building has $1.842 million. We have a separate contents of $200,000 and a separate aggregate limit of $250,000, and I'll explain what these mean. And an extra income and expense, which is also aggregate, of $250,000. Asbestos and lead abatement, $10,000, and all of that we have for a deductible of $1,000. So whether this costs $1,001 or $2 million, we still pay $1,000 deductible. This is through the insurance pool. We also have inland marine coverage. And inland marine coverage is kind of an odd term in insurance, but it simply means that it covers equipment. And this is electronic data processing equipment of $100,000. These are up to $100,000. And that has a separate $500 deductible. We have valuable papers and records coverage of $50,000 that likewise has a $500 deductible. We have rented or leased mobile or miscellaneous equipment, which is $500,000 at a $500 deductible. We have mobile equipment, which is scheduled, which scheduled means that they have a list of what that mobile equipment is. That's why it's some kind of an odd number, okay? It's just if we were to buy more mobile equipment, then that would be scheduled. And that's $424,589, and that's with a $500 deductible. And then we have miscellaneous equipment likewise scheduled at $412,419 with a $500 deductible. So explain what these mean. And the municipal property coverage is simply that when we talk the building coverage, within the municipal coverage, we have building. And that is the structure and any items that are permanently attached to the structure. Okay, so if we had an outbuilding, that would be one thing, but if we have an outbuilding that's attached to the structure, that would be covered under the structure insurance. And in this case, as you recall, we did have an outbuilding in the back, which was attached. And so that is covered under the policy having to do with the building. Then we have contents. And contents is very simple. It's anything not considered to be part of the structure. Anything that's on the inside of that building that's not the structure is contents, okay? And then we have aggregate limit. Remember I mentioned the aggregate limit? And what that covers --
(inaudible)
What that covers is things like the personal property of the employees or the public, if they had personal property in there. As an example, if somebody had brought a set of plans to Joe, and those plans were inside that office and it burned, and they paid money for those plans, which of course they did, those plans would be covered if a claim was made, okay? Also, it has to do with computer equipment, electronic equipment. It has to do with accounts receivable. And if that aggregate limit hasn't been reached, then what, there can be money left in that which could then go towards additional building expenses, which in this is an upgrade to the building, you see? So that, in this case, that's why there's a picture of an elevator. Because as we'll get to down the road, any multi-story building will have to have an elevator due to the new code requirements. So this would be a potential way to partially fund that elevator. Okay, extra expenses and income. These are expenses incurred that wouldn't have been incurred if we didn't have a fire. And specifically, the one that jumps out is relocation expense and what we are in fact paying the county to be here, to use their equipment, to use their room, to use their air conditioning, electricity, all of these kinds of things. It's our deal with the county. And we have that extra expense and income, which will, about $250,000, which will be paying for our relocation while we are here. Then we'll talk about the inland marine coverage. Okay, this is computer equipment and software. Now remember, under our regular coverage, we talked about computer equipment, but the inland marine is typically where we would probably take that money would be from that, leaving that money still in the pot in the other coverage to try to cover some of the other items. So it's specifically electronic data processing, our computer equipment, our software, replacing software. Now let me explain how some of this works. This is replacement cost insurance. And what replacement cost insurance means is just that we are going to get money that will pay us back for the replacement of those items. So if we bought an item for $200 years ago, and it's burned up, and now it costs $400 for that same item, we will receive $200 when we claim the item, but actually purchasing the item, we then would receive the other $200 because you have to replace the equipment. You can't cash out and walk away. You can cash out under some circumstances, but it is a depreciated value. Make sense? Okay. Now valuable papers and records, they're usually defined to include almost all forms of printed documents except money. And in our case specifically, we have requirements of keeping documents for certain periods of time and certain documents. And those would be within that group. We also have historic documents that would lose value, either real or imaginative, should they be destroyed. And so what's happened there is that those have been, a number of those have been rescued, and they've been gone, they're going through a drying process. They will then be, for the historical ones, whatever can be returned would be returned. As far as the other ones, they would most likely be scanned and then destroyed, okay? Okay, rented or leased equipment. This is like photocopiers. If we rent or lease computers or servers, our telephone systems, if we rented or leased those, all of that is covered under this separate policy. It doesn't come out of our contents policy. This is separately covered, okay? And we do in fact lease some copiers, things like that. And so we will in fact, the, our insurance company, through this particular provision of inland marine, will be paying those off. Those won't be coming out of our pocket. Again, leaving more money in the pots to draw from, to get whole again, okay? Mobile equipment. Self-propelled equipment that is not an automobile is mobile equipment. I don't, to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any that's been destroyed or damaged in this fire. But a good example are tractors and riding lawn mowers and things like that that have wheels and engines, but they're not automobiles. And then we have miscellaneous equipment. I don't believe we have any of that destroyed either. But that's any equipment that doesn't fall into any of these other categories. So we think of man lifts and forklifts and many, many other things. But again, we don't have that in this particular loss. So what's our present insurance status? Snoopy's supposed to be bounding forward, but he apparently just jumps up and down, so, sorry. So what's our present insurance status? Well, the first thing that needed to be done is abatements. Abatement, we had to take care of hazardous materials that are present. Right away, a test was required because of the age of our building, although almost any building, a test is required. And we of course, no surprise, have asbestos. The asbestos in our building however, is fairly, it's fairly benign situation by comparison because it's the fibers in the stucco of the building, as well as the fibers in the mastic on the flooring that glued down some of the old tile that's now covered up with carpet. But nevertheless, when you go through the demo process of breaking and so forth, this all has to be treated as hazardous material. So it becomes extremely expensive. So what they do is this, this back wall, as an example, a portion of the back wall's been taken out to allow for demo to the interior. And that wall at the first story level is 30 inches thick, 30 inches of poured concrete. Well, it has the asbestos on the outside, but you can't just go in and chip it off and haul it. You have to take the whole chunk. And so if anybody's driven by City Hall the last several days, you've probably seen a couple dump trucks, very large dumps. They have plastic laid in them, and they're double-layered plastic because you have to put this hazardous materials in the plastic. It has to be sealed up completely tight, then it has to be sealed up again in the second envelope of plastic. And then it's hauled north of Tucson to be disposed of. And we're kind of lucky that way because that landfill has been classified as a hazardous dump location because as of a very short time ago, we would have had to haul north of Phoenix, which would have increased the load substantially. So we don't have a huge amount of asbestos, but we have a heavy load of asbestos. So it's going to take many dump truck loads going up there. And we don't have the coverage for that. You saw we had $10,000 coverage. And I'll discuss in a minute, but that $10,000 coverage is done just looking at the back wall, okay? That doesn't even take care of the hole in the back wall. So then we go through the demolition process. The demolition process is just that. It's getting in there, gutting the building, if you will, and hauling everything out. The demo process in this particular case is to, you look at a situation like this first of all, and there's always several options as to what you can do. In this case, there really isn't an option of being able to demo the interior of the building because our windows aren't big enough, and our doorways aren't big enough to get stuff out. And so there has to be a decision made. You have to break a hole in the wall. And what they do is they then go in and they implode the building. The building interior gets imploded, not by, I'm not talking red-a-dare stuff here. I'm talking about just normal construction. It gets imploded into the basement. They then bring skip loaders in and pull everything through that hole back out. And then that hole is then repaired and brought back cosmetically. We'll never know the difference. We'll never know that a hole was there. Yes, sir?
I have a question. And I know that, you know, we do have to pull materials up, but in cutting that hole through those thick, thick walls, did that compromise the integrity of the walls that were left? Does that kind of bring further damage or looking down the road?
Well, the quick answer is, it was evaluated by the engineers and the experts, and they said no. But what we're going to do now, I just, that's where I was, I was speaking to the city manager. We need to obtain a structural engineer to go back in there to reassess the structural integrity above that hole. And if necessary, to, we shore it up. We take steel, or we take large dimension lumber, and it gets, just like a mine, it gets shored up at that location, okay? But it has been evaluated. The initial evaluation is it was okay, or it wouldn't have happened. And how they did that was they, they take the real large excavator, they put a huge drill bit on it, and they just take it up to the building, and they just hammer right through, and the building crumbles. Yes?
Has that wall been taken out already?
Yes. Yes, it was taken out Monday. Yes, sir. It's taken up to the second story level. Yeah, up above that, yeah, okay. So structural engineer was brought in initially to check the integrity of the building to begin with, to see if anything could be done with the original building even to begin with. And as I indicated, we'll be getting a structural engineer back to reevaluate, and then after everything is out of that building, a structural engineer will come back again because things, when they're, when you go through the demo process, things are often uncovered inside the building that are hidden, and so you don't know. So we just have to make sure that A, it is structurally sound, and then we make a decision with public input as to whether we rebuild there or not. I mean, that's how it's done. And then document retrieval and storage. They got in there immediately and got records out of, we call it Ashley's vault, but everybody will know what we're talking about. Down at the city clerk's area in that vault. That vault had four inches of water, and boxes, cardboard boxes had been on the floor. Likewise, they had collapsed and fallen over into the water, all kinds of things. Those documents were removed. They'd been treated, they'd been dried, and a number of documents have been moved. Likewise, the documents on the second floor, which would be planning and zoning and public works, those documents were removed. That was a much more hazardous situation because the floor had collapsed directly next to the vault. And so it took them a little longer, et cetera, but they got in there, they moved those, and that's the call that I got just a few minutes ago that I mentioned to the city manager. Again, effective eight o'clock in the morning, we can go and pick up a whole bunch of, like three pickup truck loads of those documents. We have, the county has allowed us to put a storage, portable storage unit back in the back parking lot, and we'll be using that for our documents in our, in this particular stage. We're trying to buy some used file cabinets to store a number of those documents so they're out of cardboard boxes. They'll be much easier to retrieve, to use, and so forth. Okay, asbestos and lead abatement, I did discuss that. It's a huge risk. It's an overrated risk, but nevertheless, it is a risk. We have insurance coverage of $10,000. The estimate is $32,000, which means that $22,000 is not covered by insurance, okay? If it comes in less than that, then we're good. Comes in more than that, which we do not believe it will, but it could, then that likewise would not be covered by insurance. Only the first $10,000. So we are underinsured on asbestos, okay? Demolition. The demolition estimate is $305,000, okay? $305,000. After the building limit is reached, additional debris removal coverage of 25% of the total amount becomes available, or $460,000, all right? So what happens is, we're paying that $305, that comes out of our building bucket of money. And when we expend that money, should we, and of course, almost any process, we will, then there's kind of like a kicker, and more money gets kicked in for the original demo. And so that's the $460. Yes?
Can I borrow the $460?
The $460? No, that's, we can call that a bonus. That's money we haven't talked about before. It's sitting over here to be used only in that case. Otherwise, that $305 comes out of the building, okay? So we've been asked, I've been asked, other people have asked, why, how did DC Restoration get involved in this? Well, DC Restoration was hired directly by the insurance adjustment firm. The insurance adjustment firm is hired by our insurance company to act, to assist us in our loss. The first thing they do is typically they have a list of providers that they go to, that they use over and over. They had a list of fire investigators, a list of electrical engineers, a list of restoration, demo companies, et cetera. They go to those looking for the best fit for this particular job, and based on past experience of working with them. So this is not a process that the city gets involved in. Our insurance company gets involved with to move on this thing quickly and to get this, the abatement, the first thing is structural engineer, all of these kinds of things to move on this. So they hired them because, and this comes from the insurance adjuster, because they have extensive experience in large commercial fire, demolition, restoration, and construction. They've been hired many times in the past and are known for the quality work. And they're the closest large commercial contractor to Bisbee, Arizona. They are out of Mesa with a, that's their headquarters, with their southern Arizona headquarters in Tucson. So what this does is, and I've worked with these, this particular company all over the state for years. And what this does is it provides a savings in material and equipment transportation, as well as a savings in per diem. So that's why the insurance company hired them. Okay, let's talk about the building insurance. We have a policy limit of $1.842. We have $10,000 taken out because of abatement. We have a demolition estimate of $305. We have a labor and equipment per diem estimate of $35. And so to date, this isn't true, to date that $35 hasn't been touched nor the $305, but to date, what it appears that we will have right now, 1.492, or roughly $1.5 million. And remember again, when the building limit is reached, 25% of the limit's added towards the demolition, which is an additional $460,000.
And that's out of the insurance?
That $460 is not out of the, the $460 is separate on our policy that, okay?
But I mean, we're not paying for it.
No, no. That's why it's kicked in.
I didn't quite understand.
In a perfect world, Ms. Hanson, in a perfect world, if we looked at this, we would be looking at, you know, roughly $2 million if we reach the policy limits. They kick that in. Make sense? Okay. All right, Ashley? Okay, now structural engineer, the initial evaluation for him was a little over $2,000. We will require a second evaluation. As of today, we'll probably require a third evaluation. We don't know that, I would assume, working with structural engineers many times, the second evaluation is a very focused evaluation, just on as Ms. Klein was asking, just on the stability of the building at that location. And so they won't have to be spending all that time like he did before, going through everything. So I would believe that the second evaluation will be much less. And then I have no idea on the third, but it shouldn't be more. Documents. The documents were moved from the building vaults to temporary storage, and the estimate of that was $18,000. They had, we had all kinds of hand labor involved because of the stability of the building, the stability of the floor, the fact that the floor had collapsed next to the second story vaults, et cetera. And we also have a hazardous material scene. So people, council members, you may be receiving phone calls about why are people in moon suits walking around the building? Okay, and that's the reason is it's required, they're going to be in Tyvek, full face masks, taped in with gloves and boots, et cetera, and have to go through decontamination because it is required by OSHA. So people will be seeing that and going, hey, what's up? Am I safe? The answer is yes, they're safe. Now what? Well, after demo, a structural engineer will make a final determination regarding the integrity of the building. We will then ask via an RFP for a repair estimate. And it's important to note that the insurance company only owes us what the building was, is, right now, not right now, but was, the day before it burned down. That's all they owe us, okay? Upgrades having to do with codes and with all of these kinds of things are on us. The, decide what do we want to do with this building is up to us. And they can go back in and rebuild this building exactly the way it was, and that's what they owe us. But any change to that, they only owe us that money. They don't owe us any additional. So it's only as it was. Now, now what? Well, code compliance will require that we have an elevator, fire suppression system. This is money, extra money. And that's where we hope that we have some in that aggregate limit that we were talking about. That was the one where we had the elevator picture in it. We hope to have some money left in that. And then what we are looking at is holding public meetings. And I think, I'll be discussing this with the city manager, but I think we're going to start these sooner than later. And these public meetings are to ascertain the public's wishes. We have some people that say, hey, we need to cash out, we don't need a building. And we have others that firmly indicate this is a historic building, we want this rebuilt. This is Bisbee. So we'll discuss that. The council will then make that decision based on public input. And the, an RFP, assuming we move forward and have a building, an RFP will be put out for an architect. And once the architect is chosen by the council, then the plans that we pull together from what our employees believe are needed, and what the public believe is needed, we mold those together, and we hand it to the architect and say, here's what we need, so draw us something that fits inside that building or at that location that satisfies as many of those needs as we can get. And right away, people said they want a room just like this. Now, then the, the council will award the architectural contract, then an RFP will go out for a contractor. Based on those plans, let's go to bid. And then we will, the council will award a rebuilding contract. And the best-case timeline for all of this is, the best-case timeline unfortunately is probably 24 months plus. If this was a private situation, this could be done very, very quickly because decisions are made and so forth quickly. But because we're a government organization, we have to go through the RFP process, it has to be out there X amount of days, then it comes in, it has to be gone through, then we have to look at it, and we have to vote on it, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to be drug out quite a while. So, now let's talk about, there were some questions about investigation. Now, let's talk about, there were some questions about investigations and things like that. There were two investigations done. It was immediately decided that we would not be involved in the investigation, particularly because of what I do for a living, is that's what I do, is just cases such as this. And it was immediately known that that would cause a potential of issues. So the Cochise County Sheriff's Department, our city manager and police chief, got together with Cochise County Sheriff's Department, as well as our lawyers, and said, we would like you to investigate this. So they have a person that is part-time in their, as a fire investigator, and he was, he came in, Detective Monroe, and what they then did is they contacted Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, which is now Firearms and Explosives, and asked for assistance. BATF is, has specialized people in place for fire investigation. I've taught at their academy on several occasions to them. They're specialized, they're certified fire investigators, and they all, each one is a member of an NRT, which is a national response team. A full national response means they literally bring a C-130, they have trucks in it, they offload the trucks, they're self-contained laboratories, everything, and they'll bring in 20 agents. In this particular case, this was a huge fire to us, but not a huge fire in the grand scheme of things. And so they did bring in an NRT member, a certified fire investigator out of Albuquerque. And he came in, and he worked with the sheriff's department, and coming up with a, the cause of the investigation. And what their findings were, and this is their press release, and I have no information past their press release. Okay? They will be issuing a report someday, and that will be available to whoever it's available to. But I have not seen it, I don't, I don't believe it's even available to us at this point. But their findings is, several, no evidence of arson or criminal activity, the fire origin was on the second floor storage space, alterations throughout the years had taken place, past electrical wiring was observed, older wiring systems can't be ruled out, and newly installed electrical was not energized. So that's their press release. What this means is that the fire was narrowed down to a location, which was a small room on the second floor. It was narrowed down to the ceiling area. Okay? And the authorities then left it at that. But we had a second investigation going, and that's the insurance investigation. The insurance company hired from their list a fire origin, cause, and responsibility investigator. And he came in and worked with, they had separate but concurrent investigations. They were both in the building at the same time. And what the insurance company also did is they hired a forensic electrical engineer. It's an electrical engineer that specializes in electrical fires. They also provided equipment, any equipment that was needed. And like I said, it was concurrent investigations. So what their findings were were really the same as the authorities, but they go a little bit further because the insurance company wants to know a little bit more. So these are verbally what was provided to me by the insurance investigators. And that is, the fire was on the second floor, storage space, ceiling. The only potential ignition source was first generation knob and tube wiring. Okay? At that particular location, the wiring that was in that ceiling was knob and tube, first generation. So that goes back to when the building was built. Okay, 107 years ago. The cause has been listed as it was an electrical ignition. However, and this happens in some cases, when you can pin down where the fire began, you can see that the only thing there is an electrical circuit, and that there was a fire. You sometimes can't find the exact wire that shorted out and caused it because it's been destroyed in the fire. Or in this case, the rafters that were holding the wiring where the fire began, they were consumed, and pieces of those rafters and the wiring fell downward into an area that couldn't be accessed for safety reasons. And so the investigators then asked the insurance company, let them know, here's what we found, here's what we know happened. It was an electrical fire from first generation wiring, so there's nobody we can go against. Because the insurance company, if they could, wouldn't want to subrogate their loss. And what that means is that if a contractor had been in there and had hooked up electrical wiring, and it could be shown that that electrical wiring started the fire, then the insurance company would file suit against the contractor's insurance company to recoup their money. Okay? But in this case, first generation wiring, 107 years old, there's no, there's no subrogation potential. And it was, this is, fire is classified as accidental. And so the insurance company, because there's no subrogation potential, said, you know what? We don't want to spend any more money for you going down and trying to pull that stuff out and digging through to find the exact wire that caused this, because it's not important. It happened, and it's something that we can't recoup our money. We just will pay our loss, which is to us. Okay, questions? Counsel?
I have one question. I know you said that the aggregate or the leased equipment would be paid by the inland marine?
Inland marine leased equipment.
Is that on a reimbursement basis, or are they paying it upfront? In other words, do we have to pay it off and then we get reimbursed for it?
They can reimburse direct if they get demand direct.
Okay. Is there anything that we're going to have to reimburse and then get paid?
We've already got a bunch of stuff, you'll see it, you've got it in front of you for tonight.
The demolition and that type of?
Yeah, well, we've got a lot of, you know, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff of masks and gloves and, and running down for our clerks to buy pens and pencils and this sort of stuff. That will all go on to the loss to be reimbursed.
As the?
That's right. Down the road, you'll see insurance company reimbursement to cover all of those things. What's being done right now is each division is coming up with lists of what they had, both personal property and then city property, computers, you know, everything they have, they're getting me those lists. Okay? We'll then be providing those lists, I'll be working with Christine, and we'll be putting those lists into the form of a request for payment. Okay? And we'll begin money back to reimburse us, again, at not replacement until we actually show we replaced it.
Right. Okay.
Okay? So yes, we got money, we're having to spend some money to make some money, but there is a possibility down the road that, and I'll get, that we can also ask for an advance under some circumstances, so we can, we can talk about that. But we're not at that stage yet, et cetera.
And most of that's going to be relocation expenses and bringing everything back up, you know, getting the computers and so on?
Well, the relocation expenses, now those, that's the $250,000 that sits in a different pot. And that, we'll be discussing with the county, how much of that we're paying the county to be here.
Mm-hmm. Right? But what about the computers?
Well, those would go under the inland marine policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get straight?
No, I, I understand. That's why it's a little more complicated.
Well, yeah, it's complicated, and I just wanted to make sure that it's as clear as possible for, I don't know, are we, are we taped or?
Yeah, we're taped, we're audio taped.
Oh, audio, okay, okay.
Ms. Klein?
We'll have a chance to look at, I just wanted to make sure that?
Yeah.
People understood exactly how it was going to work.
Okay, the one question I have, I know that in the report it said that it was the first generation wiring?
Yeah.
Whatever. And we can't really pinpoint where because of the damage. But because they were doing electric work, it notes as it was not energized, who was doing the electric work at the time?
Nobody was doing electric work in that room.
Okay, but who's been doing the electrical work on that remodeling?
There had been electrical work done by a contractor that hadn't been energized yet. Like, electrical work had been done, but they hadn't been wired into the circuit yet, they hadn't been plugged in yet.
Okay. And I, I guess I want to?
As well as our own people and inmate labor.
Who was, who had been doing the electric work?
Our own people.
Two contractors.
Okay, well, let me, let me, let me back up so I can explain what I'm saying. Our people took out ceilings and exposed electrical wiring.
Okay, so who is the company?
Who's what company?
The electric company that has been doing the work?
Mitch?
Mr. Electric.
Mr. Electric. He was interviewed by everybody. That's it? Counsel?
How much of the demo has been taking place already?
Two days' worth.
Is that something that normally starts immediately? Or, I mean, I don't know the process.
The insurance company wants to make us quote "whole" as soon as possible. So typically, the demo does start right away, typically, so that they can, I mean, they've got a bunch of losses, they want to, you know, this is something on their desk that they want to, they want to move, they realize that this isn't going to be over for them for many months, but they can get to a point where they're not going to be dealing with this every day. So demo typically starts as soon as the company knows a cause, then demo.
And what if, I'm new at this, so what if Bisbee, like, what if we decide to sell the building outright, and the new mayor took over, they want to take over demo?
No, because we wouldn't be able to do that because it's a health hazard. We would be required to mitigate all the asbestos in there, which means they're going to have to cut the building.
I had, we saw a good couple of kids in the building.
Yeah.
And that's where you got to stop.
Yeah, we had two 12-year-olds, I think it was 3:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, and two 12-year-olds were in there, taking the fire extinguishers and firing them all over and breaking stuff. The one remaining glass door that we had, they broke to get in, and so, it is an issue, both health and welfare, to move on these things and get them done. Yes, ma'am?
Wow, that brings up another question. When did this happen? When were these kids in there?
Chief?
They lost four days after the fire.
Yeah.
And we're just hearing about this now?
Well, I heard about it just in passing, it wasn't reported to anybody. I don't know if it's, you know, I assume there's a police report on it, but, I mean, that's, so I guess you're just hearing it now. I heard it a week ago, maybe.
Okay, so then can I request that, will this council be informed?
With what?
Things that are happening and going on?
About kids breaking into a building?
Well, there's a potential there for a big lawsuit against the city if those kids were to get, even though they broke in. If they were to get hurt or trapped or whatever, we would be liable for it.
Sure, you can make that, you can make that request, and we'll, we'll just, as well, perhaps get together so you can let us know where to draw the line about what you want to know about.
What kind of comment is that?
Well, the comment is, I don't, there's crimes happening all the time. What do you want to know about, what don't you want to know about?
This was in reference to City Hall.
Okay.
I mean, no, we don't ask for everything that's going on in the city, but, you know, something like this that we as a city could?
Chief, can we make sure that the council is notified? Mr. Smith, is that all right? Notify the council on any actions at City Hall? Trespass? Thank you, sir.
So the building's secure now? Is that correct?
Well, there's fence, you know, they're, well, there was fences up around it and so forth then, but, but the building has a hole in the back. And I wasn't there the?
Is it?
I'm sure that it's fenced off there, but yes, yes, sir. You bet. There's lights up all around the building too, and, and, you know, attempting to make it as visible as possible, you bet. Anything else, counsel? Audience? Yes?
There was, if you go back to one of the sides of the RFP, there was an architect RFP question mark? Just wondering if the question mark is about, is it that aviation?
I think that RFP question mark was, it is, first of all, we wouldn't be providing an RFP if the council decided not to rebuild. I believe that that's?
But the contractor was on site.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I mean, if we're not going to rebuild, we wouldn't do that, but I believe that was the first RFP that was down, that's why a question mark. Nothing hidden there, yeah. Thanks. Anything else? Anything else, counsel? Yes, sir?
I know there was smoke detectors in the building, part of our set that were going off, they were not looking for a central alarm?
I guess I'm not sure. Joe, do you know?
No, they weren't.
I don't, I, I'm, you know, I don't think, I don't know for sure, Mr. Budge. I don't think they were because it wasn't required at the time of the building, but I don't know that as a fact.
Well, the, we might have, we spoke to that, because they're looking for a central alarm, so the first communication?
Correct.
I was wondering where they go, if they were not, if they blew up, if they did, I don't know, because of the, I think that's something to look into, as far as whether they have a central alarm or something. I think no, I don't get it. The wires are, if they had it, there's no smoke detector. Okay, what about, switch yours, we'll have to have that.
We had, we had put in our own smoke detectors, the wires were interconnected to protect personnel, but it wasn't, there was those reports not connecting to the contractor.
Thank you. Excellent, that, that, right. And of course, the purpose of smoke detectors is, is lost, saving lives, not property, and you're right. Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? All right, thank you for your indulgence. Hopefully this, this helps us with the picture of where we're at on this thing.